Okay, everyone will please stand for our invocation and our pleasure of allegiance, Commissioner Freeman's going to lead us in the invocation.
All here is by a place. I follow God, thank thee for this day. Thank thee for the county of Gates. We thank you for this nation, powerful nation that we live in. All put together by you. We appreciate the confidence that the citizens of Gates County have given my colleagues in this county and our county manager. We pray that we make the right decisions at all times and bless us with making those decisions. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which is famous, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call for the Red Bull meetings to get kind of board commissioners for July 15th, 2019. Um, except that there is no minutes for this, um, meeting. Uh, we do that at the first meeting of the month. Uh, are there any adjustments to the agenda? If not, then I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So, who have a term?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made, the pocket was second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, delegation, a nice delegation. Joe Pofacto?
Yes.
Thank you for coming. Will you come up here to the podium, state your name and address?
Hi, I'm Joe Pofacto, 202 Willington Road. Some of the issues I'd like to address, I'm not sure if all of them pertain to the commission, but they're issues that I think we have a concern with. The first is, what is the weight restriction of Highway 37? My money, tax dollars, are being made or being used to repair that, uh, road. According to the North Carolina Truck and Vehicle Revenue Restriction, it's a 22-page document, there is none. In fact, Gates County's not even on the list of roads. So my money is being used to repair a road that has no restrictions and no enforcement. According to highway patrol, it's a local PD issue. According to sheriff, it's a highway patrol issue. So this body, the commission, is either by who is responsible for our tax dollars being used to refix that road? Who's going to find out the weight restrictions and enforce those restrictions? Right? The Commonwealth using our dumps, my money again is being used to support these dumps. Yet people from the Commonwealth of Virginia are using these dumps to dump their trash. According to sources, the operator is not allowed to stop them. Why is that? Again, the commission's supposed to watch out for our money. The operator should be allowed to ask approval residency. If they cannot prove residency, they should, they can still dump, but plain numbers should be taken and that purchase should have a bill for services. It's our dump, it's our money. The water department, still on in the 21st century, not accepting postmarks as proof of payment, not using, not, and using a bank outside the state. When I spoke to the water department, they put the blame directly on the county manager for this. With that, the water department is a monopoly and the prices are increasing without explanation. This page is mission number four, is the road electric cooperative is raping the people of Gates County and other counties. There is zero oversight. The rural electric authority is supposed to have oversight, but they do not. When I contacted them, they sent me a 54-year-old, 54-year-old statute that says they're allowed to have a, a cooperative. I wrote the governor and the attorney general, who stated that no one has oversight. The attorney general suggested a letter writing campaign. Therefore, Chris Quinn and his staff can charge what they want and no one would be the wiser. Again, what is important is protecting taxpayers of Gates County. The Almarque cooperative of electric costs one-third less than ours. The Almarque was investigated by the FBI for misappropriation of money and giving good deals to some people on their bills. Should the FBI be investigating RAC? The road electric corporation explained their cost, why their cost is so high? And we are paying for a coal gas bill they have nothing to do with, except for the road electric, has no clue how to negotiate with the contractor. And I have spoken to all this with Chris Quinn. He knows me very well. And last, I am blessed, I make good money, but I'm tired of seeing my, my money, tax dollars being wasted by this poor, some more tax money, it is not your money, it's mine than the other taxpayers of the county. It's time to stop the simple addition and make some hard decisions on what to cut and what to scale back on. Targeting the easy ones like police and emergency services should not be first on your list. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else on the list? Okay, um, move right along. There's no administrative reports, no public hearing, no business, there is none. Okay, which item is approval of the, um, 2020 audit contract, um, that you have, you have copy of that in front of you? This is the firm that audited our, um, did an audit this year, 2019?
No.
No?
They audited fiscal year 18, it says for fiscal year 19.
Well, yeah.
We're in '20.
Yeah, we're in '20. Okay. Um, do you have any comments about this con-?
It's the same amount as last year, it's $45,000 for the audit to take place.
Any, any change, um, in services and its standard?
Okay. Okay, um, the government fee, I would see the $41,000 and then the financial phase, total is $45,000. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Uh, Jim, I only motion that we accept the audit contract from the contractors that were used last year.
Okay, a motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll say an emotion, ma'am chair.
Okay, a motion has been made and properly second, any additional comments?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am chair. Just real quick, since, my first time seeing this, there was an issue the past year with the previous auditors, is that correct?
Yes, because these were the auditors who did fiscal 18, so they have all their records.
So there's no penalties, when I look there, there's no penalty for something like this was happening with them, like happened with other company, and delaying, where we've had issues, um, with the delay in getting the most recent audit?
There weren't penalties. What we had to pay Martin was an additional sum for the fiscal year 18 audit was because they went back and reviewed fiscal year 17's audit, made some corrections that finance office took care of and looked at some other data in order to ensure that fiscal year 18 information was correct, but there were no penalties.
But we ended up spending more money though?
That's because they charged us to go back to review 17, but it was not listed as a penalty. When you use the term penalty, I'm thinking of-
Did we ever spend more taxpayer money, is basically the question?
Right, right.
But it was due to that the firm we had before did not complete that.
Well, they did the audit, but there were questions and they would not release the information to Martin and Jenkins in order for them to verify.
So we, I didn't, with, with that being said, I didn't have to do any recourse in case this was to happen again, you know?
No, because fiscal 18 and fiscal 19 are the same people doing the work.
Right, but I was saying, if, if this firm that we're getting ready to approve, $41,000 has the same issue that the previous firm did, and we get stuck again having to pay somebody else, I didn't know if there was any recourse against them where, you know, we hadn't had the audit by a certain time and if it wasn't, they had to pay us for, you know, building the discount.
It would be a fiscal year 20 if we selected another auditing firm and they could not give the information from Martin and Jenkins.
Right.
It would be a very complicated process and other county was investigating that and as far as I know, they decided not to pursue that.
Martin's?
Martin's with Darns was no longer doing anything. Well, there is business, but they have limited the number of counties that they were working with.
And somebody, another county did pursue some action, I guess?
Well, they were considering action last year with the firm that they used, that they did not take any, last I understood, because they were having the same issues we had.
Well, analyzing what Commissioner Jones has said, are you thinking sort of about adding a penalty into the contract?
I just don't want us to see us getting the bottom line of business before and not having recourse, where we're having to pay somebody else to look over somebody else's problems, is the only thing that I was questioning. I, I didn't see that, it might have been in there, I might have overlooked it, but that was just my thinking.
This, with this contract that's very similar to one we received last year, basically it is the same contract with different years for, that the LGC approved, so it's a standard contract.
I'm looking at what you're saying, Commissioner Jones, is that it's the same scenario or something similar caused a delay in our audit, are we going to look back and say, we should have put something in there addressing it? Pretty much what you're saying, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I wonder, I wonder if any other counties come in there?
I'm not sure, that's a legal question, but to say you're aware, they've already, they're already scheduled to come and start in on work so that this year's audit will not be delayed, they can't come until you sign this contract.
What, if Ms. Island has any law processes as pertaining to, uh, to penalty or not?
Once again, new and this is my first year, all I can speak to, um, I know that the audit was delaying, some of that was, you know, prior to me being here, but as far as whenever I have questions and I needed further explanation, they've been extremely helpful. James, um, has been extremely helpful and they have shared all their spreadsheets, etc. I don't know, like I said, I haven't had any experience with the previous auditors, so I don't know if they or us were coming with, you know, the backup information that this firm has. And I do know from what I can gather, the more you switch firms, then they have to, you know, it'll take them longer the first year. That's all information I know.
And I understand them submitting the contract without that wording in there, but if there was, if there was a paragraph that said, "In the event of a waiting fight or late, a delay, or in the event of, you know, maybe two or three matters," this would be the recourse going forward from there. I don't expect them to put that in there, but I was asking them to address, you know, they're familiar, ma'am chair, they're, they're familiar with the situation because they have the work behind it. So, but I do see here, going back to Natalie's comment about beginning work, it said July 29th, that they're going to begin work. Um, so, um, them being familiar with the situation, they often understand us wanting to address it before it happens.
It's kind of ourselves and citizens, yeah.
Isn't it true though, that this, um, that these audit firms, don't they have to get some type of approval from the LGC?
Yes.
Well, you don't start till after 29th, then definitely breach the contract. And, you know, that's not legally, but when you state the contract, what you're going to do it, then don't do it. 29th is when they're supposed to start, they can't start that date.
Well, I, I think the con-
Unbreach the contract.
I think the comments so far have actually not been, that they don't start on the 29th, but what if they, if they have the internal issues that Martin Starnes did?
It wasn't Martin Starnes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was not, I'm sorry, excuse me. But if that, if they run into the same scenario, if we're caused to have the same scenario because of some internal issue, like with that other firm, are, are we going to be in the same dilemma? You know, if, let's see, effective, one of our contracts, now remember it was the school, right? Then they laid an audit?
Right, because we could not go with that, we had to wait until the audit finished before we went to-
It causes us to have to delay us in the school project.
But what's, according to-
I was going to say, I noticed also in there that, uh, they were to issue orders by 31 hotels in 2019.
And if, and if I may, three, I think it was three years ago, the state did not have their information ready by that time, so no one's audit was completed by that time.
And they gave extension.
Right.
So the state kind of looks at it too, and if, and if they don't file the contract, and then we have, we have a recourse, because it's a contract between two parties, they don't live up to their end.
Well, that makes sense, I'm not disagreeing with that, but we didn't have any recourse with the other firm.
Their other terms dissolved, half over.
They're still, aren't they still in, in business, did you say the word?
The portion, the, the firm that was, there was an office, may put it like that, there was an office that was with the firm that we contracted with, the office broke away from the firm and the firm kept the contract because that's who our contractor-
So they were sort of subjugating out?
Well, no, they were actually, the previous contractor had multiple offices and the office that got our bid, that bid on it, said they were going to do the work, said at the end of that calendar year, they were leaving. But before the calendar year was over and before they finished our audit, they broke ties.
And that's it?
Yes.
So we would not, you know?
So then they had to send our audit along with, I think it was about 20 other audits or so to other offices in order for them to be finished. So the fiscal year 17 audit was a difficult audit year for many counties.
Washington County and our region, of course, in the same boat, with variety.
Well, it's a, I'm glad Commissioner Jones pointed out, it says at the top here that it's a contract, and if they don't comply with our contract, we do have recourse contracted, but we signed the contract with the other firm as well, and we still have burn.
It might have been a legal issue where we didn't follow through legally, and we could have and should have. We wanted our legal counsel to address this as well.
Well, Derek, I'm, I'm okay with that, the 29th is the period, has a start date. If we don't let them start on time, we can't complain if they don't finish on time.
But we have, we have a meeting the next week.
But that would still push them back.
Two weeks.
Yeah, but still, it's pushed back. And this is, like I say, this firm has been, you know, approved by LGC.
Was the other one approved by LGC that did it?
Yes. But that was like, I mean, in all the years, that had not happened before. Yeah.
I mean, I, like, like Kim, I, this is my first one, I'm new to Kim, so that was just something that, that I remember, that y'all have a deal with, that I don't like getting it twice. But if y'all are okay, you kind of manage okay with it.
I'm happy to proceed tonight.
Okay, any more comments? And it's good for once to read, for all of it up, but in, in our contract, you always have a, you have a, if someone breaks the contract, you already have legal recourse.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed.
And then James Spence will be here on August the 7th to present the fiscal year 18 audit. And while we're discussing audits, I would like to know that I had upon coffee with the LGC, they are, will be sending a letter to the commissioners, I'm not sure if it will be coming this week or next week, regarding the concerns of the LGC as related to our fund balance, they were very concerned because it was at 10%. And I was asked if money was pulled from fund balance to balance the fiscal year 20 budget, and I told them yes. I also explained that the money that was taken out of fund balance, a large portion of it was to fund the wastewater project because we had to pay those large bills before EDA would reimburse and that, that pro, the EDA project would be finished this fiscal year. And the monies that were left over in that fund 20, yes, fund 21, excuse me, 21, would then be reimbursed back to the general fund and to the enterprise fund, because we did have those resolutions stating that that money would be put back into those funds.
And the date, they're going to be here in August?
No, that's, that's not the LGC, that's the, right, the LGC will be sending a letter, I anticipate it probably coming later this week or sometime next week.
Now, all of them will speak.
The all of the person will be here.
Are you going to email us that letter so we can see that?
I'm not sure how it's going to come, I don't know if it will come to each person, if one letter will come here addressed to the board, I'm not sure, but if it comes here, then yes, it will be sent all to you.
Okay, move on. Personnel board recommendations. Personnel board met for our last meeting at the first of the month, and there's a recommendation from that. Would you like to speak to that, ma'am?
There were two recommendations and both were approved by personnel board and they are both recommended. Excuse me, the first is for Christie Bynum to have a title change and therefore a grade and salary change to the title of benefit, payroll and benefits coordinator with a grade 69 salary of $4,100. And the other is a 4% salary increase for Tiffany Ben. And the attached documentation that was given to personnel board is included, Christie Bynum received a certification that would help with personnel. And then Tiffany has received her additional certification and that she will also be the backup operator in charge for our wastewater system, for the water plants.
And these, the increase in salaries has, was covered in the budget, we just checked, correct? So there's no more money coming out of anywhere, I mean, we don't have full money from somewhere else, it's already a payment. What is the pleasure of the board?
Ma'am?
Yes.
I would, I would motion that we accept the, the recognition of personnel board services.
I'll say that motion.
Motion that they made, the pocket was second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that is approved by zero. Okay, we have several budget amendments to look at, these are to carry forward, these budgets have been encumbered in our fiscal year 19 budget, and they have to be brought forth to this budget. Then Ms. Island?
Let him amend that one, if this is to bring forward the wastewater, the sink of our stream debris that we did back in June, this is to bring forward that one.
Okay, as you can see, to bring it forward, $51,000, $684,000 from our previous budget included in this budget, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like a motion that we do, uh, accept this budget amendment, uh, budget revision number one.
I'll say that.
Both, the motion's been made and seconded and in discussion.
Yes, ma'am. To, to help Kim a little bit, anytime you can, you may have used it, I might not have heard, but anytime you can use the word grant, we appreciate that, okay? This is a grant.
This is a grant.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes five zero. Okay, amendment two.
These are the carried forward emergency management grants that we had in the month of last year.
Okay, and this is to $900, $9,458 to bring forward into this year's budget. What is the pleasure of the board?
Ma'am chair, I make a motion that we approve budget revision number two.
I'll say the motion, ma'am chair.
The motion's been made, the pocket was second, in discussion. And Mr. Wynn is very good about getting grants for emergency management. Any, all comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes five zero. Uh, amendment three.
This is for, um, for money received back in the magnitude wave, for extension, for extension.
Okay, for extension, $148,000. We, we accept any money, um, so $148,000, is this the United Way out of Suffolk or was it?
It was out of the Heflin area.
Okay.
Ma'am chair, I make a motion that we approve budget revision number three, second.
Okay, a motion's been made, the pocket was second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five zero. Amendment four.
This is for a contract we had in place with Walt Broden and for the sort courthouse in fiscal 19 that wasn't completed, so we had to move through those things.
Okay, um, once again, funding of, has been moved forward, and my is $22,400.
No, no, it's $11,000.
$11,000, $200,000. Okay, I, it's going to be this, how do you do it?
It's a double amount.
Thank you. It always makes it seem like it's double amount. Okay, $11,000, $200,000. What is the pleasure of the board?
Ma'am chairman, I make a motion that we do accept a budget revision number four for the appropriate fund dollars.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made, the pocket was second, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Island. Okay, the next item on the agenda is surplus.
This is actually now for four chairs, they had, they ended up replacing one that was a client's chair, so it's a surplus four chairs and actually to dispose of them due to the conditions of the chairs.
Okay, so it's four chairs have moved.
Right, it actually is three four chairs.
Same department.
They're off the plate in this section.
Ma'am chairman, I make a motion that we approve this request for surplus disposition of assets.
Second.
Okay, a pocket, a motion's been made, the pocket was second, in part discussion. And it's going to go on the-
Right, they must to dispose of them because of the condition of the chairs.
Okay, dispose, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes five zero. Okay, um, additional sources of comments? Val, okay, come up and go ahead. State your name and your address.
Good afternoon, Valerie, 58 Black Street Road, Sunday Avenue, 27949. And thank you, um, on the opportunity to be here tonight, just to speak a little bit about Gates Partners for Health. I do not have a prepared written report, which I will get, get you one for the past six months, but as you know, I've been out in the community working hard for our citizens of this county that deals with chronic illnesses. Um, we've gone through numerous events, activities, um, mock the calendar for emergency day in October, that's coming up on October the 19th, um, starting at nine o'clock with the 5K run, so that's going to be a future event coming up along with some other events that I'll get you a list of. And it's a pleasure to see my commissioner from Sunday, Commissioner Jordan, good to see you. And, um, Brother Jonathan is on our board, so we have our first meeting starting in July, um, the end of this month, and we'll start by counseling planning for the year along with doing our community health assessments, action plan that's due to Riley and, um, August, so we'll start, we'll be working on that. So any questions for me? And I thank you again for the financial support along with Black community, going to one, the Memphis Grant, they do fund part of my salary along with the county, and I do appreciate- They do fund part of my salary along with the county, and I do appreciate it's not taking, but like we did, I'm standing wisely to make sure that, um, take care of this.
And you do an nice job of these, this mill line days.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Commissioners' comments? Commissioner Jordan, start with you, if you have any.
Well, it's good to be here tonight, and, uh, glad that, uh, you were able to resolve all the issues that we've discussed. And, uh, I'm very thankful to be here.
And we're glad you are here.
Yes, indeed, and, uh, I'll be, play that, uh, the, to serve you well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, Mr. Jordan, yes, we indeed are, are fortunate to have you here with us, and certainly enjoy your leadership. I want to thank everyone for, uh, certainly for being here, and those that have participated, and those that are thanking and might participate in or calling us with other issues. We do sit here to, uh, to look at those issues that you bring forward to us and try to answer those the best we can as a collective body. Thank you.
Commissioner James?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. Good seeing Commissioner Jordan, glad Mr. Jordan let him come out of the house tonight. Thank you, Miss Jordan. He might make curvy tonight, too, it looks like. Um, thank you to the citizens that came. Please continue to reach out to all of us up here. Um, we serve you for ways that we can better our community. Thank you.
Christopher Owens?
Make curvy, like, everything. It's good to see everybody. Uh, it's good to be here, and we thank you for coming. Have a good night.
I'm so thank you for coming, and we need to take seriously the issues you brought for us. Um, we need to investigate some of these issues. Um, and some of them are not in our, um, area of expertise or our area that we're directly involved with. But, um, we will certainly take your comments seriously, and we will investigate. Um, thank y'all for coming. Try to, uh, check on your people in your neighborhood because it's going to be extremely hot, especially, um, if they are hot, make sure that they have, it's cool, and they have water and everything that they will need. One thing about living in a small county, we know each other, and we'll be able to help each other. So make sure you check on your neighbors during this heat, and also keep your animals with plenty of water and shade as well. Okay, thank you.
If I may, real quick, I believe, and those who are on the DSS board, correct me if I'm wrong, they've already, the applications for the fans, DSS does have that program again this year, and they've already started giving them out, is that correct?
I think there was still a few left from last meeting.
So if you know someone who might need a box fan, contact DSS, they can tell you the program qualifications. I just looked on the website, and I don't see any updated information about the numbers or anything.
But that isn't for this time, especially with the heat. Okay, at this time, we need to go in closed session, so it's North Carolina General Statute 143 dash 318, 11A, on legal and personnel, um, concerns. So, um, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Subdue, second.
Motion's been made promptly second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess so that everybody can, um, Republicans can take time to, 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 to.
At this time, I entertain a motion to come out in closed session.
Subdue, second.
Um, a motion's been made promptly second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Subdue, second.
Motion's been made promptly second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, speaking of...